I am testing one, two, two, mic check. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get folks kinda together cuz I know we have a very robust agenda. I know Councilmember Gruber, first of all, first and foremost, good afternoon, everyone. I pray that everyone is doing well and your families are doing amazing, all right? Hopefully, everybody had a wonderful holiday weekend, even though I know it was very challenging weekend deputy mayor as far as seven shootings in two hours from my understanding. And there were a lot of accidents and we want to, you know, acknowledge the individuals. And I think it was a young lady, if I'm not mistaken, who also was hit and I understand she passed. So, we want to acknowledge that and the effects of all of that before we start our meeting. Maybe we'll have a moment of silence, just acknowledging all of the recent activities over the weekend that has happened in our city and thinking about, of course, I believe the young man that was hit on Thurston was also laid to rest last week, if I'm not mistaken, as well as the young lady, there was a lady that was also hit this weekend who succumbed to her injuries as well. So, if you would just join me real briefly in a quick moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. We're also joined with Councilmember Stanley, as well as Martin, as well as Councilmember Lashae Harris, Vice President Mary Lupien, and of course, our President Miguel Melendez. Give me one second here, this time, we're gonna call the Parks and Public Works Committee to Order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the row.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember P.O.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so, we have a presentation scheduled for this month's committee. I wanna thank our staff, Daisy, for helping to kinda coordinate this with our Commissioner and the Commissioner and his team, which they have an amazing team. I asked that presenter, please speak clearly into the microphone, you may come to the podium to present. We are now also joined by our Councilmember Dr. Gruber. We will now begin with this month's presentation. Now, this Director St. Alvin will lead us in this presentation. Now, this, is that correct, Commissioner? Okay, wonderful. This, this presentation is something I think that's dear to all of us and to all of our citizens that may be watching via YouTube. We're gonna talk about potholes, okay? And this is something that I think we can do more education around. To be very brief, but I will, I will promise you that we're gonna be doing a lot more education around this topic and other topics that are very germane to our community, that tend to be nuisances, they may seem like small things to some, but they seem to be major things that all of our colleagues, I'm sure, typically get constituent calls concerning. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to our Commissioner and your team.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I think, as you noted, this would be a topic of interest, we thought, particularly given the time of the year. As I said on our review meeting with you, you know, if hot mix asphalt doesn't get you excited, I really don't know what does. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Director St. Alvin and her team to discuss what her and her team do with respect to our getting out there and getting these potholes filled as quickly as possible, once they're reported, and also some of the proactive actions they take too, as they're out to find these things and do them before we get the call. So, please, take it away.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to be able to talk about services we provide the City of Rochester residents. As you know, today's presentation is potholes.
Yes.
There's several benefits to the timely repairs of potholes. Decreases the maintenance cost for the drivers and the city.
Pull your mic down just a tad bit, please. Yep, there you go.
A little height challenge.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, it is, thank you.
It decreases the maintenance cost for the drivers and the city. It also prevents further damage to the pavement in that location because once we've cleaned that, there's no more area for water to get in and cause more damage. It increases the lifespan of the streets, obviously, for the same reason, and improves the traveling experience. We all want a smooth ride. Next slide. How do you report a pothole? You can report a pothole online, or you can call 311. We ask that you include as much information about the location. A lot of times, people say a pothole, it's, it's in the intersection, or it's just to the left of the intersection, and, you know, is it around a manhole, is it at the curb? Is it as much information as we can have because they're not all potholes, these concerns? Several of them come around manholes or come around a bad utility cut. So, it just makes it easier for us to be able to identify it and make a timely repair. Reported potholes are repaired typically within two business days. Next slide. The process to fill a pothole, we inspect, once we get there, we inspect it, we prepare the pothole. So, we have to remove anything that's in the pothole itself, stone, debris, water, whatever might be in there, and then we apply a hot mix. We smooth that surface out to be level and tamp it down so it stays. And we're very fortunate to be able to use a hot mix year round. So, all during construction season, we take any leftover asphalt that we have for the day and we stockpile that so we can use it all winter long through a reclaimer, an asphalt reclaimer, that allows us to use the hot mix and basically recycle it. So, nothing goes to waste, we have a more permanent repair, and it's very successful. Next slide. Just to give you an idea on how many pothole requests we get in fiscal year 21, 22, 1,460 potholes were reported and also repaired within, 98.9% were repaired within two business days. And we don't just wait for people to call in, we go out proactively with our crews route by route so we can get ahead of this, and we're out year round, weather permitting, obviously, and go out, and we're actually fixing potholes in the winter and trying to get ahead of that spring onslaught that we get once we have the freeze thaw. The potholes that we get proactively this same time period, it's about 2,500, and some may be the same as this 1,460, but we, we combine the two and make routes so it's efficient as possible, so we get as many potholes as we can with each crew daily. That's what I had, is there any questions?
Yes, before I open it up to the committee, can, how does, can one be compensated, city resident be compensated, or anyone for that matter, for damage to their car by a city responsible street pothole? Yes?
That will be me. The answer is in general, no.
Okay.
Under New York State law, there's what's called a notice of defect law, which exists in most states, which basically requires that unless we had prior written notice of that specific defect and had a reasonable opportunity, which is a subjective term, obviously, to correct it, we cannot be held liable. The reasoning behind that, I think, is pretty obvious. I, you know, Commissioner Perrin can tell you how many thousands of miles of road we have in the city, I can't, but the understanding of the courts is the ability to keep up is a challenge, and it's not like you or I, who might have to keep up 60 feet in front of our houses. Here, you have to keep up hundreds or thousands of miles of road. So, the answer in general.
In general.
I mean, we get the claims all the time, we will check the notice of defect record, which we keep through engineering, and unless there is a defect there and we have had that opportunity, the claim is usually denied.
So, in follow-up to that, if I have reported a pothole on a city maintained street, let's say, a year ago, and my car is now damaged, or a car, family member car, whatever, is damaged as a result of the same pothole that I have reported, or that person reported a year ago, would that be potentially a case where that person would be compensated?
If it's the same pothole, that might well be something we'd have to consider because of the length of time.
Yes.
But again, it still weighs into, you know, the courts look at, well, did you have a plan, or are you doing them in a reasonable order?
Yeah.
You know, this applies to not just the potholes, but the cracks in the sidewalk and all of those types of defects.
Gotcha, so it's highly, it's very unlikely, well, I'll ask the question this way, out of the 2,500 potholes that are being repaired yearly, it sounds like, in this, if you don't have this answer, maybe we can get it later, how many claims do we receive a year? And out of those, how many claims, how many are actually compensated? Would you say?
I would say zero to very little above zero are compensated.
Right.
I'd have to go back, I don't wanna guess at another, but we certainly get 100 claims a year for potholes and other defects. And it's the same, it applies the same thing on county roads for the county and state roads.
This is gonna be my next question. So, I really, I wanted you to say that, Attorney, because I, I, I think it's important because people just think that the city's gonna pay for their vehicle to get fixed. I hear that a lot, and I just want our citizens not to be discouraged, but I want them to understand the importance of, of, of reporting the pothole, the process of reporting a pothole, and allowing that process to do what it needs to do, and so that, and then my second part, and I'll open it up to the rest of the committee, I don't wanna prolong the conversation, but I think it's still an important conversation, is that, and you brought it up, you alluded to it at the end of your, your statement, all streets are not all city maintained streets too. I think the perception from the community is that every single street, all roads, I always say this, all roads lead back to City Hall. We know they really do, but they don't. So, I think it's important that, and I've asked this Commissioner to figure out a way, and I think there's some maps and there's some things that we can do to identify those streets that are more generally used streets, frequently used streets, that are not necessarily, and I'll give you an example, for instance, my church is on Cumberland Street. Cumberland Street has major potholes, and it's a one-way street, but that is not a street that is maintained by the city, that's a state road. And so, you know, I've, I've, I've had many of my members upset with me because they keep saying, we calling you, then you keep saying you're gonna get this, you know, you're gonna make this complaint, which Commissioner can say I have, about Cumberland Street, but it is not a city maintained. So, all my members out there watching, not lying. So, could you just talk briefly, real quickly, about that, Commissioner, about the fact that, I don't know how many, I'm not asking you to give us a total number, but there are a numerous amount of streets that are not city maintained, that are heavily traveled?
Yeah, Chair, you are correct, there are, you know, and it's interesting, cuz as you said, you know, one of the big ones that we hear about all the time is Interstate 490. Regularly, why doesn't the city do something about that? Why don't we clean the graffiti? And it's not our facility, so there's a number of, I would call it, interjurisdictional items that could come into play with us doing work. It's also a precedent, we, why are we taking care of other, other agencies and other, you know, levels of government facilities? But yes, you are correct, in addition to 490, there's a portion of Lake Avenue, there's a portion of Ridge Road, the entire bridge crossing the river, Veterans Memorial Bridge, actually carries New York State Route 104. So, wherever there's not a jurisdictional or intergovernmental agreement, no, we don't maintain those, and in particular years, it's the state-owned portions of the on-ramps to the inner loop, but in a lot of cases, if our teams see it, we do just go and take it. I mean, I know I saw one on State Street on a Saturday afternoon that just, somebody would've lost a tire in there. I mean, if you didn't see it coming, it was. So, immediately, you know, got in touch with Director St. Alvin and we had it filled. Just, you know, again, a lot of these, though, on the sizable ones, as the, as the Director explained during the presentation, I think it's important to note, you have to have the right treatment at the right time, there's a window of opportunity. Sometimes, we are going in and filling in potholes, we know that they're gonna come back, I mean, that's just not the treatment, but we can't leave it in the condition it is, for the reasons that Corporation Council mentioned, on our own facilities. The only other thing I would draw attention to as part of this presentation is that there's always a lot of discussion about what are we doing from a sustainability perspective. And when we fill these using hot mixed asphalt, we are recycling existing asphalt. So, not only are we getting out there quickly and addressing the issue, we're addressing it in a manner that doesn't create more asphalt, and for those that don't know, asphalt is petroleum-based, so it's oil-based, and that, that's a good way for us to also get out there and do it. But no, we are going to put together, we're verifying right now a map that we keep, or maintain, I should say, of facilities that are within the City of Rochester, transportation facilities, but not owned by the city, so that everyone is aware of that. But ultimately, from a constituent, which is a customer standpoint, they don't care who owns and maintains the road, they just want it fixed. So, we're always happy to work with our partners at the state for the streets and for the facilities within the city streets that they own, as well as counties, when we see a light out or something like that, as they do our signals and signage, but no, we're here to help in any way we can.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have Councilmember Harris and then President Melendez, and then Councilmember P.O.
Thank you, Councilmember Lightfoot, Chair. Commissioner, if you could explain to me, and I'm not sure if this affects our streets or is it state streets, I noticed there's been a different application to like manholes, where you have like the cement around it, and then you, you know, you put the asphalt on the outside. I noticed that there's a significant change in how they, you know, you know, how it, how the roads are driven when you ride over them versus the old way. Can you please explain to that process, is that a city process or is that a state process? And are you planning to do that with all the other manholes? Cuz I could tell you, those is where, those are the parts where I get hit with my tires cuz I have a low car.
Yeah, so Councilmember, that's, that's a very great question, and that's exactly it, is that the city has made a decision that for our streets, we use exactly what you're talking about, which is a concrete collar. So, it does two things, one, it raises the level of the riding surface up to the manhole level. That's not only a better ride, but with that concrete, it also stops the cracking that we would typically see in the asphalt. Concrete is generally a more stable road surface. It's why if you, if you go on very high volume roadways, including the New York State Thruway, or many of the interstates that are owned, operated, and maintained by the state, they will use concrete. So, when we do that, that's ours. Now, what we will do is if there's going to be work done within the city, that's where we'll work with that agency, and it's almost exclusively the New York State Department of Transportation, to say, yes, we would like to say the same thing, not just for the sake of uniformity, but for the, the reason behind why we do it, which is it just makes for a better riding surface for our customers and also reduces our, our long-term costs of asset management. So, we're not starting to see those cracks and potholes forming around the manholes because, no, there's a concrete collar there that stops sort of the dispersion of the crack in the first place.
So, then my, I'm glad to hear, glad to hear that, but my follow-up question, is there a plan to, to like distribute that throughout the whole city?
Yes, yes, that's, when we go back through and we do manholes, now, that's what we do.
Good. So, I have one more question, cuz I don't wanna take up all the time. With, in regards to, I see that you guys did a great job of putting out there how to report potholes that are, you know, for, for, for city streets, but is there a way that we can identify or have the consumer or the customer identify that there's New York State sites? Can you connect, find a way to connect us through websites or like a PSA so we can contact the state, have them contact the state directly? So, take a little bit of pressure off of you guys so that can go directly to the state?
Yeah, I believe, and I'm gonna let Director St. Alvin answer, I believe it's already online.
Okay.
And then once, our map, once we verified it, if that's different, we'll update it as is, so that everyone knows it. But again, you know, I mean, it's sort of interesting, typically, you'll know who owns the road by the signage that's on there, but when it comes into the city, I don't believe that the state uses all the time their black and white shield, if you ever look at it, it's a, it's a square.
Right.
Black with a white sign inside of it with a, with a root number, cuz typically, those are what we call the touring roots, they're assigned to state number, but once they get into the city, they're our jurisdiction, except for those limited instances. But yeah, we'd be happy to, but again, if somebody calls us with a pothole on a state road, we're not just going to, you know, take the ticket and go, well, we don't have to worry about it, we're gonna make sure that we get that connection with the state so they're aware of it and can fix it within the reasonable timeframe, as Corporation Council discussed.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for your answers.
President Melendez.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lightfoot. With respect to the state, I just wanna say, I had this constituent reach out this weekend about a pothole on 104, so this presentation was timely, and I sent them to, this is easy to remember, 1-800-POTHOLE is the number for New York State DOT, so you can report it, any state road, 1-800-POTHOLE. I do wanna ask about that connection between city and the state. So, if a constituent reports a pothole through us, through 311, are they automatically sent to the state or like through 311 operator if they identify the road, or are they taking the report and then DES is sort of forwarding on the complaint?
I'll let Director St. Alvin answer that, cuz it's not as simple of an answer as yes or no, there is, there is some determination that we make if it needs to be forwarded. And I do wanna point out too, that the New York State Department of Transportation does reach out to us on issues on city streets to say, hey, we received this, this concern or this complaint, we believe it's yours, and that happens a lot, particularly around ramps on 104 Carter Street, places like that. So, it's, it's a, it's a mutual relationship, I don't wanna make it sound as if, you know, they're not telling us what, what needs to happen on our facility, if in fact, it is ours.
So, you're exactly right, comes into 311, most times, they will tell them that it's a state road and either give them a link or tell them to go online and use that link. Sometimes, they do send them through to us, and we will get them wherever they have to go, or take care of it ourselves, if it becomes, you know, if it's a danger or a hazard, we certainly wanna take care of it in a timely manner.
Great, and my second question pertains to the inner loop right now, inner loop slash Cumberland. So, I drive to City Hall most days, through North Street, through Cumberland, over to City Hall, so I know exactly what Councilmember Lightfoot's talking about in terms of the road there. Given that the inner loop project is coming, I don't wanna feel like we're neglecting, not, not we, but the state is, or anyone is, neglecting Cumberland Street or the inner loop and the interim, but it feels like that road is just tremendously terrible. And I wonder, you know, what's in the works, if there's any plans to mitigate that in the short term while we continue to talk about inner loop north?
Yeah, President Melendez, I'll, I'll address that very directly and say, we're not going to be getting work, beginning work on the inner loop north transformation for at least a few years, and there's no way that that road in the condition it's in is going to go for a few years. At the same time, treatments, depending on when you make them, you're basically overspending if you're not gonna get the full life cycle out of it. So, what I would expect is that you're gonna see more patch and repairs, but we're gonna expect the state to be timely and say to them, if you're not able to make those patching and repairs, then maybe you should do a more intensive treatment, like some type of mill and resurfacing or an overlay. It has to be maintained, we can't just say, well, there's a project coming, otherwise, we could, you know, use that as an excuse for a number of, number of projects where we haven't necessarily gotten to design, but we have plans, and every time we do a plan, well, you know, no. So, we wouldn't use that as an excuse, and we won't allow anybody else to either. We will have to take care of it, but it's less likely that you're gonna see any type of a capital intensive improvement for something that would just be removed, you know, four or five years later.
Sure, and I wouldn't expect a full-on capital improvement, but certainly, it'll be helpful, I think, to all of our cars if something is done with Cumberland. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember P.O.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before my title of Councilman P.O., I was pothole P.O. in my neighborhood, probably one of the better descriptors for me. Because of that, I created an app so that my constituents can reach out to me directly with those kind of issues, take a picture, send it right to me. What are we looking at as a city to where we don't have to call into 311, because I myself have experienced the issue of either no one answering or having to leave a voicemail, or maybe even got to someone and it somehow went into a black hole of never getting to the appropriate people? So, what are we looking at into the future regarding utilizing technology to be, to better access these issues, specifically potholes from our constituents, that can go right into a spreadsheet instead of having to make a phone call and report it to someone that way?
So, I think that, I would let Director St. Alvin speak to how we're already doing that with our teams through the Rubicon Pilot Project, and that's what we're doing, right? So, our folks are out there doing refuse and recycling, our team, team members are out there, they say, okay, there's an issue here, they take the picture, it's automatically geolocated, basically, which is what you've done. Wiki Maps has been a vendor that's been out, very reasonable, you can use them to do it. It's not all that sophisticated. I would say that your suggestion is one that I wouldn't limit to just potholes or even just DES activities, I mean, if, you know, you shouldn't have to figure out who's responsible at the city for taking care of it, it needs to be seamless, and that's something that we've been working on, heard comments about, you know, this constituent is, is, you know, becoming frustrated or upset because they just feel like it's runaround, you know, we're starting to coordinate better internally as we go forward. So, that would be something that I think should be a suggestion, and I would be happy to work on that as a citywide initiative, where somebody could come through, go on an app, take a picture, and it automatically says that they're standing here on Boxard Street, and we're not sure why this particular median isn't mowed, although it looks like a pollinator garden, but we would at least be able to get him an answer and respond to that. So, my response to you is, I'm happy to take that back and start to look at some of our functions that could be improved, and improvements through efficiency as well as not only that, but what I'll call leakage of these types of concerns and requests that are submitted that are going to be subject to human error whenever humans are involved. So, it's definitely something that I would say, if we wanted to do, do it on a citywide scale and we can look at it. I like that idea, the automation.
Thank you. Thank you. The, um, second question here is due to asphalt being oil-based with the fight against fossil fuels, increasing prices for oil, what are we looking at in terms of alternative, uh, alternative materials? Or are we just going to continue eating the increased costs?
Yeah. So that's a great question. And it's, it, the unfortunate answer is if you think that it's hard to find alternative fueled vehicles, but even now, it doesn't even, or even, you know, 12 months ago, it doesn't even compare to alternative materials in terms of what you can use in place of asphalt. So there's been work done to look at, well, what about recycled materials, namely, um, you know, trash or other things that can do it. But again, you've gotta be pretty certain about what the, I will call the chemistry and physics are of what you're doing. Um, the composition of these materials has to be, has to be good for a number of reasons. And until they're tried and true, I would not call them state of the practice. I would call them not even state of the art, probably state of the research, um, element of, of the profession of design and engineering. Because there just hasn't been anything that's been found to do it as well as it is. And of course you'll hear about, you know, self-healing concrete and things like this. But at this point in time, um, in terms of both, uh, testing to ensure their applicability and their wearability plus pricing, um, that's why I think this ability to recycle asphalt for potholes has been, you know, just, it's, it's, it's a game changer and it's something that, um, the city's been doing for, for multiple years now. So it's not something new. Until we come up with something else though, that's what we'll continue to be looking at. And I would also add too, only at the national level, um, the asphalt and the cement suppliers are, are very, at the national level are very, um, are very influential. And a lot of cases, that's where you will see things like the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and the various design guides, um, the Green Book and other things that they do. Um, it's almost extensively, um, these are the standards that need, these are the standards that need to be used for pavements.
All right. Um, Council, I told you potholes was gonna be hot, man. No point intended. Um, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah. I just wanted to add to, um, Councilmember's PO's comments about the app there. Um, just so you know, there is a, an app that's already piloted by the city called Report It. Um, we piloted it for, um, you know, uh, you know, minor crimes. So that's an app that the mayor and his team and I were envisioning to be used eventually for what you just mentioned for potholes and other nuances in the city. So just something to think about, to talk about the mayor offline.
All right. All right. We're gonna, we're gonna move away from our potholes here. Uh, and we're going to conclude this presentation. I wanna thank, uh, the Commissioner and Director Albin, uh, for the great presentation. And we're going to move now and proceed with our legislation. Uh, introductory number 268, authorizing a mandatory agreement for the Lincoln Branch Library reconfiguration. Um, there is one disclosure from Councilmember Gruber, as he is a council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board. He is only required to disclose this information and may participate in the discussion and in the vote. Uh, any questions, comments and/or concerns from our committee? If none, I entertain a motion.
Move it. Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Introduction number 269, authorizing a mandatory agreement related to the Maplewood Nature Center project. Any questions, comments and/or concerns? Councilmember PO.
Thank you.
And then after that, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. At the beginning, it was discussed that this would be more of a nature-based playground. Is that still going to be the case?
Um, we're continuing to work with, with libraries and drives to make sure that whatever programming is done is gonna be consistent with everything. But that's, my understanding is that's still the intent.
Thank you.
Martin Dean Gruber.
Thank you. Uh, could you please provide, uh, more detailed, uh, cost breakdown, um, justifying the increase? Like what is being covered, uh, by the increased amount?
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that, but absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Gruber?
Thanks. Um, so it says here that, uh, the original, originally we just, uh, worked with, uh, this firm, Architectura, if I'm saying that right, for the, through schematic design. So does that mean that schematic design is done at this point?
I'll have to look into what, what, where we are with the specifics in terms of percent completion for all of these items.
But there was a, there was a, a, a trigger at some point that said, we're happy with this firm. We wanna keep moving forward with this particular firm. So presumably things are going well?
Yes, they are.
Can, um, can you just follow up with either, I, I'm sure we'd all love to see the schematics, understanding that it's still very preliminary. They're not final designs by any means. But if there are in fact any drawings or renderings that could be shared, and if not, then maybe a timeline of when they can be?
Absolutely, Councilmember.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, no further questions, comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move it. Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number 271, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of 700,000 bonds of said city to finance preliminary, preliminary survey studies, designs and cost estimates for a High Falls vertical gorge access facility. Before any questions, comments, concerns, we have an amendment to be considered before us. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to amend introduction number 271.
Well, we gotta go back to 270.
I didn't do 270? I'm sorry. Excuse me. Uh, flip the page. All right. Thank you. Um, excuse me. Scratch that. Let's go back to introduction number 270. A bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of 1,800,000 bonds of said city to finance the Rochester Water Works Building renovation project. Any questions, comments or concerns? Uh, Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, essentially we are looking into vertical access at the, at High Falls, correct?
Correct.
Which is great. Very excited about that. What happens hypothetically, I understand we have to study it, but what happens if we, it's determined that vertical access there cannot be, that building can't accommodate it. It can't be done safely or something that just makes it not happen. Do, is it still worthwhile to make all these very significant renovations to the building if we can't also have the vertical access?
I would say yes. And I'll say yes because the vertical access was something that really was looked at is what would we do to provide that access to the gorge? And that's been particularly, I think, um, elevated as a result of the announcement about High Falls State Park, uh, which the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation is advancing. Uh, regardless of that, this is a very historic building, particularly as it relates to, um, our waterworks, our water system. Um, you know, this is a phenomenal system that we have in place, uh, not drawing water from, you know, Lake Ontario or Aquifers and the like, but actually getting this all the way from Hemlock, um, and Canada's lakes. So there is still a lot that that building represents, as well as the fact that just the High Falls District itself, um, is in need, I think, as we start to see folks to begin to come back down there. We're making all of these improvements as part of Rock to Riverway. This is a Rock to Riverway project, um, a visitor center that we can do things from display of historical artifacts. Um, just a place where somebody can come in and get more than what they had prior to when it closed in 2019, uh, before the pandemic. So I would say yes, we will still consider all of this. That is just one element of the three phases that we wanna look at. Um, but no matter what, I would say just having a design for that building. And then at that point, making a decision about what we wanna go forward with, with construction can still be very much a part of the community discussion, which it will be as part of the design process, uh, for all of the elements, including the vertical access to the gorge.
That, that makes sense. Is, is it safe to say that there's a, there's at least some degree of confidence that the vertical access is, is feasible? Understanding that you wouldn't do this if you knew for sure that it was, but you also wouldn't do it if you knew for sure it wasn't. You feel pretty good about it being a possibility?
Correct. Initial feasibility was determined as we looked at options for the building.
So then this, what, what we get out of the next three introductories is something that when this work is done, concrete answer, yes or no? And if yes, how we get some vertical access?
Absolutely. That's the point where we're not doing conceptual level planning. At this point, we're getting into design. So everything would be looked at, you know, including what you may attach this to, what the various designs are, stability of soils, um, that they're going to land on. Everything would have to, everything will be evaluated as part of this.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number 271, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of 700,000 bonds of said city to finance preliminary survey studies, designs and cost estimate for a High Falls vertical gorge access facility. Before any questions, comments or concerns, we have an amendment to consider before us. I would like to make a motion to amend introduction number 271 to revise the bond amount listed in the legislation from 1,800,000 to 700,000. The amendment legislation was submitted by the administration and has been provided to all of our council members. Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been second. Uh, now let's vote on amending introduction number 271 to revise the bond amount listed in the legislation from 1,800,000 to 700,000. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Uh, any abstention? The motion to carry, um, introduction number 271, uh, is, is moved. Uh, any other questions, comments or concerns on the main item as amended?
Move it. Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor of the main item as amended? Say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Introduction number 272, authorizing an agreement related to the High Falls Water Works Building and Gorge, uh, vertical access project. Any questions, comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second. It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Introduction number 273, authorizing funding and a mandatory agreement for the Blue Cross Arena Riverside addition. Any questions, comments or concerns? Um, Council Vice President Lupien.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I was looking for, uh, kind of a breakdown of what ever we know the cost might be. I understand that with design, you don't necessarily know what the cost might be. Um, so what, what the expected cost is as best we can determine that. And then whatever funds that we've allocated to the Blue Cross expansion so far, including what the funds will be used for and what source they're coming from, and then if they've been spent. Um, and lastly, a breakdown of revenue versus expenses that we incur for the Blue Cross Arena.
All right. I'm sure we'll get that to you.
Yeah, we can work on that. I mean, there's different funding sources and some of these are part of a multi-year agreement. So how those are determined is a little different than this where we came in and said, as a part of a Rock to Riverway project, and then going and figuring out where we were gonna fund it, including ARPA funds, um, and some other items that we've looked at. So yeah, we can give you that breakdown, um, but there is a difference between, um, this expansion, um, and some of the work that we do as part of the regular agreement.
Right. And I'm just focused on the expansion.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
Um, Councilmember Martin.
Yes. And for the expansion, um, just also an itemized cost breakdown of what the increase, uh, will be used for. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Introduction number 274, authorizing a mandatory agreement related to the Rock City Skate Park Phase Two and Three project. Any questions, comments or concerns? Uh, Councilmember Vice President Lupien.
Um, actually this is a finance question. The funding's coming from 2016, 2017 cash capital. And I'm just wondering how that works? How can we grab from prior years cash capital?
Uh, thanks for that question. So, uh, if we have prior years unspent funds, we can always use those, uh, as an available funding source to fund something. And I, and I would say that, you know, typically we do, uh, spend through the cash capital that's allocated to a specific year, either in that year or probably within one to two years after. Uh, but every once in a while, there are some leftover funds that are repurposed.
Is that the same as the kind of savings that we put in the fund balance?
Uh, I would say those are, are different. Um, one being, you know, more for operating purposes, the other for capital.
Okay. So cash capital is like, had been intended for capital expenses?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. Sorry if I missed it, but can you provide a, a timeline for Phase Two and Phase Three?
We can, we can get that, we can, we can get a more detailed one for you in terms, in terms of construction inspection dates or construction and administration dates. Yes.
Okay. Thanks. And then, uh, just curious too, I don't know how much you've been involved in the, the design or, or the, the wonderful DES team there, but are we building this for, um, with the goal of being able to like host regional, national competitions there? Is that, is that part of what Phase Two and Phase Three looks like in terms of, um, that was always the talk initially about Phase Two and Phase Three, there'd be more seating, concessions, restrooms, so that we can actually host events there? Is that still on the cards?
I would say yes. I would say as part of this design, any applicable standards that would allow us to be able to host those types of events should be incorporated into what we're looking at. So Phase One, the actual, um, skating and use area meets those standards. I don't know why we would wanna do concession and restrooms and an expansion that doesn't allow us to continue along that path. So yes, that will be considered as part of the design.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah. I'd just like to advocate that we, um, you know, try to, uh, provide more programming and training surrounding, uh, the skating activities. I know that, um, there's been some done with our centers, but in general, you know, like to see more city folks use those skate parks and see a lot of folks coming in from the suburban areas, which is great, which is good. Uh, but I'd like to see more programming targeted towards our children.
Noted. I will pass that along, um, to our partners over at Department of Recreation and Human Services.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Introduction number 275, appropriating funds for the Genesee Street Reconstruction Project. Any questions, comments and/or concerns? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Some.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Introduction number 276, appropriating funds for the 2023 Preventive Maintenance Group One project. Any questions, comments and/or concerns? Uh, Councilmember Martin?
Yes. Could you provide just an explanation of what preventative maintenance entails? It seems, um, like it's common sense, but...
No. It's, it's, it's not, it's not common sense at all. No. Um, there are various types, uh, and again, I'm gonna, there, there are various definitions of it. I'm gonna give you mine. Um, so the first one is really corrective maintenance. That's what I would consider to be a pothole. You sit there, you look at it, it's already happened, you've gotta take care of it. Um, preventive maintenance is where you're going out and saying, how do we stop potholes and other deterioration from occurring at the appropriate time? So generally when you, when you first build a road and, and you'll get varying, um, opinions as to what the useful life of a street or roadway is. Um, generally you can always keep it together enough to keep it passable. That's really not the goal. So typically you'll build a road. You open it up, it's, it's rated on a one to 10 scale for its, its visual inspection is a 10. Um, you'll go three years. You might wanna look at doing some crack sealing. You're gonna start to see those cracks. You can seal those. That's preventive maintenance, right? They've happened, but they're, they're really not affecting the riding surface like say a pothole. So you'll do those. Then you'll start to do, that, that's very basic, but then you'll do more, I'll call it capital intensive. And so that could be just a straight overlay. You may put, you know, an inch on top of what's already there. Um, you might do a milling and resurfacing where you're going to tear up what's there, resurface it and add some. Um, and you'll do all of those until you get to a point where you're doing a true rehabilitation, where you might not be moving the curbs, but you're gonna be getting in there grinding up really, really good, a little more than a, a light mill and resurfacing. That would be considered rehabilitation. Um, and then ultimately you get to reconstruction where you've done all of that, you've done what you can, but the road just needs to be put back, um, in, in its entirety. And you're gonna do all of the work along it and everything else. Um, a full, a full-scale reconstruction of, I will call it immense complexity, given, you know, how long it went and how many would be state street, what, what we see out, which we're anticipating completing this year. So corrective is it's happened, it's affecting, you know, the riding surface to the point where somebody notices it. That's corrective. Uh, preventive is pretty much anything we do up to, up until you're going to have something very capital intensive that all of a sudden you're doing, you know, multi-week management of traffic, cause you've gotta get people on each side while you do a full, maybe not full depth, but a, a pretty good depth, um, you know, replacement of the pavement itself. So, but by no means is it intuitive. No.
Yeah. That's a really helpful explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. Introduction number 277, a resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid state Marchiselli Program A eligible costs of the highway of the Federal Aid State Marchesselli Program Aid Eligible Costs of the Highway Preventive Maintenance Group One Transportation, Federal Aid Project and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number two seventy-eight, authorizing an agreement related to Seneca Avenue Reconstruction Project. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Now I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number two seventy-nine, authorizing, uh, consolidated funding grant application and agreements. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I entertain a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any nays? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Introduction number two eighty, authorizing an agreement for the fueling of vehicles. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, Councilmember Vice President Lupien.
Um, I have the same question on two eighty-one and two eighty-two is just what's the fuel source of the vehicle?
Oh, these are the Marshals vehicles, so I would, I, I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to what they are. Um, I know with, in terms of our fueling arrangement, I'll have to look into details in the instance.
They're, they're not alternative fuel vehicles, though.
I, I don't know what their fleet is comprised of.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, introduction number two eighty-one, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of four million five hundred thousand bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of nine automated solid waste collection vehicles, one automated recycling collection vehicle, and one plow frames to be attached to the foregoing ten vehicles. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number two eighty-two, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of two million two hundred thousand bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of five sweeper vehicles, two patch trucks, and two loaders. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, let's see here. Introduction number two eighty-three, authorizing a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four water main cleaning and lining and lead service line replacement project. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. All, now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Introduction number two eighty-four, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of three million three hundred thirty-three thousand dollar bonds of said city to finance a portion of the cost of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four water main cleaning and lining and lead service line replacement project. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Now I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number two eighty-five, authorizing agreement appropriation of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two New York State Water Infrastructure. Uh, Improvement Act Funding Lead Service Line, oh, excuse me. Yeah, Improvement Act Lead Line Replacement Project. There is an amendment for consideration before us. I'd like to make a motion to amend introduction number two eighty-five to correct the year of the project as well as the amounts listed in the legislation. The amended legislation was submitted by the administration and has been provided to the council members. Can I have a second?
Seconds.
Uh, now let's vote on the mending introduction number two eighty-five to correct the year of the project as well as the amounts listed in the legislation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion to amend carries, uh, for amending two eighty-five. Uh, any questions or comments or concerns, uh, as we vote on the amended two eighty-five introductory? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Introduction number two eighty-six, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of two million bonds of said city to finance a portion of the cost of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Fund Lead Service Line Replacement Project. There is an amendment for consideration before us. I'd like to make a motion to amend introduction number two eighty-six to correct the year of the project as well as the amounts listed in the legislation. The amended legislation has been provided to the council members. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been second. Now let's vote on the mending introduction number two eighty-six to correct the year of the project in the legislation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Uh, any questions, comments, or concerns on the item as amended? If none, all, now we vote on the item as amended, introduction number two eighty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Introduction number two eighty-seven, authorizing a military agreement related to the Transitional Job Training and, and Placement Project. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, uh, Chair Lightfoot. I just got a quick question. I saw in the, the memo that we have here that, that we will be adding twenty-five additional residents under the Crumelo Dusche transition to employment, and I'd just like to know what's the total number of participants?
And you mean that, that this will add to?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it just twenty-five, but will it, what is the total number prior to adding?
Right.
And then what will be the total number afterwards?
Sure. We'll have to get back to you on, on the whole thing, but yeah, I just wanted to point out that this is meant so that we can put an additional crew out now for a litter, as well as continue to do what we began last year, and I'm gonna say fortunately didn't have the opportunity to do, which is clearance of, um, RTS bus shelters, uh, when, when snow reaches the, the threshold by which we would clear sidewalks. But we can get you numbers on how many participants and others, and also, you know, it's, this is a good program for everyone. It really is.
I like this program.
Yeah, me too.
And I didn't know if, you know, I guess my mindset was, you know, is there an opportunity for us to expand it to more participants, you know, to help out? That's all.
Yeah, we continue to look and we will, but we'll get you the numbers on how many existing participants. Um, we have our, our, you know, again, again, it's, it's participants, but they may vary. Again, people move out, new folks move in to do it, and, and ideally, as these individuals are coming out of incarceration, when they move on, they're moving on to, to better and more gainful employment, and, and this is really that stepping stone that we want for everyone that, quite frankly, is an opportunity they may not get from some employers.
Right, so my follow-up question to that is, do we employ any of those that, that, you know, finish this participation? If so, can you provide those numbers too as well?
We can.
All right, thank you.
Council President Melendez, and then Councilmember, uh, Martin.
Thank you, Chair Lightfoot.
And then, uh, yes, I got you. That's Ms. Smith.
Um, just with respect to this specific program, and, and maybe general sense of, of maintenance of corridors in general, um, could you provide us with a sense of, uh, which corridors this, or which neighborhoods this quarter, uh, this program targets? And then what the frequency is, like, how often should we expect to see this program operating in the community?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. That's all planned.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Dean Smith.
Uh, what is the compensation for individuals who participate in this program?
So our, our agreement is actually with New York State Docs. So during our agreement, we pay a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The, the person actually gets two hundred and twenty dollars because it's, it's supplementally funded.
Like a, a day?
A day. I'm sorry, it's a daily rate and they get paid daily.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Chair Lightfoot, I'm wondering if we could get a work session on this program. I would love to learn more. I would also like to know how success is measured?
Absolutely. Well, first, to answer your first question, absolutely, um, we'll work with DASSI to put that on the list of...
Thank you.
Of things. You're welcome. And was there a second question to the Commissioner? I'm sorry.
Yes, how are you measuring success? Is there a cohort that you are following for a period of time? How are you meas, yeah, how are you measuring success?
When we do the work session, we'll have, uh, we'll be able to delineate for you how we're doing that, um, and also be able to take input on how it may be better to, to show that as we go forward with the program, for certain.
That would be great, because it seems like a wonderful program, and with our high incarceration rates, I can't understand why we don't have more people funneling through this program. So I look forward to the session.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, too. Um, any, without any other questions, comments, or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. Now we vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Uh, before we adjourn, I just want to, um, uh, reiterate that for our citizens out there, due to the holidays, um, we know that the, uh, Fourth of July holiday, that refuse collection will be delayed a day. I did see something go out on social media too, Commissioner, on Twitter, I believe. I did see a little flyer, and I believe it was on Instagram as well, so commend you guys for putting that out. Uh, but my understanding is refuge, uh, for this week, uh, will be delayed a day, correct?
That is correct, and hopefully, since it's the Fourth of July and it's been celebrated a number of years, people, people will remember that as opposed to the one we had about, well, what's going on after Juneteenth for our first time of celebrating it.
That's right.
But no, we appreciate the reminder. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, with no further business, the Parks and Public Works Committee stands adjourned.
Just one quick question. Is there a schedule for, for pickup? Is it online?
Yeah, absolutely. If you go and you go to your address, it will tell you when your next pickup is for both, uh, refuse and recycling, which is done every other week. So we actually have a map online where you can select the address.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna call Neighborhood and Business Development to order at four thirty-five, so we'll give folks a little time to clear out and swap seats, and then we'll bring it to order. Call it a roll. At this time, I call the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee to order, and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So let's get to it. Introductory number two eighty-eight, sale of real estate. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Couple.
Well, hang on.
I'm sorry. Jump the gun.
Couple of, uh, clarifying questions.
All right, Councilmember.
Yeah, um, so number one, is it that land four thousand feet or less is deemed unbuildable? And the second clarifying question is, what does it mean for land to be landlocked?
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember. Uh, four thousand feet is generally the definition for buildable. Um, typically, we look for a lot to be at least forty feet wide and at least a hundred feet deep to be considered buildable. We have many lots in the city that are only thirty-three feet wide, and we find that they, they don't really accommodate more modern homes along with a driveway, so we, we have a rule. Um, and then your second question about being landlocked, it is possible to have a parcel that you cannot access without having to cross another parcel, and when that's the case, it's considered to be landlocked.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Council Vice President.
Does that, um, minimum lot size take into account, you know, kind of what we're talking about with tiny homes and small homes?
Um, in the case of, of tiny homes, typically, um, we see those as more of part of a tiny home community. So, um, when you're constructing a community, they can be closer than that, and they're built as, as, as a, uh, set of structures, as opposed to saying each one has to have four thousand square feet. So no, that wouldn't necessarily be the case.
Small homes are different, though, right? There's some, what they call small homes built over like on Diamond and in that area, where maybe they wouldn't need the whole lot size, or is it still the same?
We, we would generally still use the same description of lot size for those.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and now we vote. All in favor of introductory number two eighty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number two eighty-nine, authorizing acceptance of easements for Forty and Forty-two Commercial Street. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and now we vote. All in favor of introductory number two eighty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number two ninety, authorizing the acquisition of Fifty Taylor Street. At the request of the administration, we will be holding this item in committee. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Nope, okay, and so now we move on to introductory number two ninety-one, authorizing a loan agreement and payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Par- Parliament Fairfield Affordable Housing Rehabilitation Project. This is an RHA project. Um, my question that I had was, Will, and Sean Burr is here, so if you can come on up, sir? So when it's all over and done, will the rent still be thirty percent? Well, could you explain to us how the rents work now and how the rents will work after?
Mr. Burr, if you...
Please use the other mic. Thank you.
So as you know, we offer two programs. They're called RAP.
Into these mics.
Other one. Which mic?
Public housing converts to Section Eight, so the rent calculation is still the same. The rent amount may change total, but HUD makes up that difference.
Okay, so the tenant rent doesn't, whatever the rent is, is what the rent is.
The rent will stay the same.
The rent will stay the same. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Council Vice President.
Is that a rad conversion?
Yeah.
And I know we've had this conversation, but it's been a while. Does, does that take a, away from our allotment of Section Eight vouchers when we do that conversion?
No, it actually adds to them.
It adds to it, okay.
One of the only ways public housing authorities can increase their voucher allocations is by Woodrad conversion.
Okay, thank you.
Whether the public housing authority or other, uh, opportunities within the community.
So it frees them up essentially. Got it.
And those are project-based, those will be project-based.
Those are project based. They stay with the unit.
Stay with the unit.
And all the residents who live in the, in both sites now have right of first refusal to come back once redevelopment, regardless of income.
Questions, comments, any other questions, comments or concerns?
Yes. One of them was just answered, so thank you for asking and answering that question. Um, can we get a breakdown of those units? Because I would like to know how many are one, two, three and four bedrooms if we can.
If we can get that, please.
Great, I would love to have that.
It's okay.
I think I like that song.
Wow.
Must be summer.
You had a great weekend.
Great. And I, I believe some of what.
Excuse me, bedroom side?
Yes.
Broke down my bedroom side.
Yeah, please. And I believe some of what this covers, you discussed in your work session with us. Can, can I have a copy? Can we have a copy of that?
Yes.
Or was it already sent? That PowerPoint presentation?
I think that was already sent.
Okay.
I can resend it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or concerns?
Yes. Two more. Will there be any case management or similar services offered in either of these units?
They, even with RAD conversions, the new residents, which are now participants, have the same access as they did with our Resident Services Department that can connect them with other programs as well as support services. So they will still have that at their disposal.
Great. And then my last question is, so the legislation mentioned that there were some, that this legislation addresses some specific barriers that were addressed by our MAPP and the Housing Quality Task Force. What specific barriers were those that this legislation would address?
Accessibility.
Accessibility.
We don't have accessible units at either site right now.
And your definition of accessibility?
ADA accessible. I'll include that in the breakdown. The new units will have somewhat of a different configuration because of that. And the one building at Parliament will come down and a new three, three or four story building go up. So that'll, I'll, I'll do the, the existing and then the after. Bedroom breakdown point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burr. I'm also a fan of your work.
And to the administration, if you could get a copy of the visit ability standard that everything that's built now in the city of Rochester has to meet. I think that would help for kind of helping council members understand what's going on across the city regardless of funding source going forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other questions?
One, one question, all right.
Uh, just, just a question related to, I heard you say that the folks that are there now have right of first refusal to return. But in the interim, what's the plan in terms of displacement or, or moving folks while the construction's underway?
They have multiple options. We meet one-on-one with each, each resident to determine what their needs are. They won't pay a penny out of their pocket for whatever expenses are incurred. We'll cover all those costs.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and most will be relocated into another public housing unit. Some will choose to go move in with residents and, or relatives, excuse me. But they have, they have those options.
Okay, any other questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, need a motion and a second. We're good, sir.
Thank you.
Move it.
And a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded and now we vote all in favor of introductory 291. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory 292. Authorizing an assignment of Section 108 loan relating to College Town. So let's see. And we have a note here that Councilmember Gruber is required to disclose only and may discuss and vote. So. Any other questions, comments or concerns related to the Section 108 loan related to College Town? Council Vice President.
So I'm just trying to understand, I think what this is, is we're assigning the loan to the Meloria Company. So they're going to be paying that or are we assuming it?
Yes, Councilmember, that is correct. The University of Rochester is creating a, an entity that will take over the remaining payments of this loan as part of their purchase of these properties.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Just, I thought I saw Councilmember Harris, but, okay, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Smith, you have anything?
Well. Can I put them in writing?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, Harris, Gruber.
Yes, um, thank you, Chair Patterson. Will this remain a mixed use development?
Uh, yes, according to the University of Rochester, they intend to maintain it as a mixed use housing and commercial development. They have no plans to relocate any of the commercial tenants or to put any university offices or anything in the facility. It will remain a facility. There are a couple of buildings there. The hotel is a separate property and is not part of this. And the CVS drugstore is a separate property and is not a part of this.
Thank you. And my other question would be, will there be any additional council action needed for this project?
Um, I don't believe there were any other council actions required. Council, because the loan was originally made by the city to the, the folks in Cleveland who built this property. In order for the university to take it over, they wanted to be able to maintain the loan but pay off the remaining balance. So we had to put them through, believe it or not, underwriting to make sure that they could afford it. And then given that their underwriting was complete, they are, we're recommending that they be allowed to take over the loan.
Thank you.
So based on what you just said, Commissioner Miller, about the hotel, can we, can we start just by making sure we get a map of all the different, of what exactly is defined as College Town? Cause there's a lot of things that I think seem like they're College Town that may not necessarily be part of what we're talking about here. So a map would be really helpful and if you already sent it, my apologies, but.
Uh, yeah, there is a, there is a map on the second page, an overhead. But if, if that's not in your package, we'll certainly make sure you get it.
Well, that, but that map doesn't, doesn't show the specific, like, is there a way to see the specific buildings? The, the separation of, rather than like a, an actual photograph? Not again. Not again.
What happens when the grandkids get the phone?
What is your daughter texting you, Linda?
Okay, so you would prefer a, an overhead view that shows the buildings?
Oh, please, thank you. And, and so you mentioned before that the university has said, and I know there's folks from the university here, so if someone from the university should answer by all means. But you, you mentioned that the university is not planning on any changes to the property. But let's just say hypothetically, changes do happen and there do become some university functions in what we now know as College Town. Does the taxability of the property remain the same?
You guys want to address that or should I?
I mean, the example here obviously is the old Constantino's, which.
Right.
Was a grocery store, is now administrative offices.
Right.
And I presume we lost taxability there once it went from a retail business to an administrative office. If that's wrong, that's, that's kind of the conversation I'd like to have here. Please, yeah. I think it's the other microphone.
Whichever one works.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, for sure. Uh, Mike Zangy, I am with the University of Rochester Real Estate Office. And taxability will not change. Uh, this property's under pilot right now and that would remain for the duration of the pilot. So we don't have any intentions of changing the use in any of the buildings. And just as a note, we occupy several of the buildings there currently with offices and clinical functions. So overall, our intent is that the use will stay the same.
So even in the example I gave, when it went from a grocery store to administrative offices, nothing changed because it was all a pilot and it was a pilot, what with the store, it's a pilot with, and that's a 30 year, that's a 30 year pilot, I presume?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, that, that will remain the same. And so the change from the grocery store to our dermatology practice had no impact on the taxes.
Okay. Um, follow up question, and, and again, if, if it's university or administration, by all means. Um, what is the reason for doing this now? Where, where, where it looks like we're 17 years or there's 13 years left? So there must be a reason why of all times now we're going to do this.
I'll give that a shot. Um, the developer, uh, the current owner, I should say, of the property is indicated that they would put this up for sale across the nation unless something happened with the university. So it was deemed that having the university as the owner would be the, would be the most prudent thing to do with the property. So I think that's correct. Do you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. My last question, Deputy Mayor Commissioner, would just be, so in addition to the map, can you just make sure that we understand what the, what is remaining on the pilot agreement as of now? So X number of years left? And if any major changes from the original pilot application?
Will do.
Thank you very much. That's all for me.
Any other questions, Council Vice President?
Um, two questions. One, what is the term of the loan? When do we expect it will be paid in full?
The, the term of the loan was, I believe it was 20 years. Yeah, it's a 20, 20 year loan and so the initial loan was 20 million and the loan balance is 13, so.
So over the next seven years, we anticipate it being paid back? Okay. And then the second question is with the pilot, there's usually a basis for the payment? And I know with some, it's, you know, shelter, 10% of shelter rents. What's the basis of the payment for the pilot?
I, I would be happy to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
And bring you that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Smith? Okay. Okay, on that point, then, need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded and now we vote all in favor of introductory number 292. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 293. Authorizing the sale of the Court Street Parking Garage. Public hearing to be held on Thursday, July 13th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Now, before we get into the parking garages, I would, I would encourage all council members to take a look at this wonderfully prepared document that's sitting on your desk, that the deputy mayor is prepared to go into excruciating detail with you on. Or you can ask questions. So, questions, comments, concerns on introductory number 293? Group, so we'll just go down the line. Everybody, everybody gets one, well, let's, let's try and get one, one passed, one question first and we'll come back around, see if we got anymore.
Do you have a limit to one question?
Just, just to start, just one question and the next person, the next, just, just.
I'm not gonna say more than five.
Yes, can I, can I just not, can I float up?
How many questions you got?
It's, it depends on the answer.
Ah, this guy, all right, go ahead, all right.
I'll be brief.
I'm gonna live on the edge, okay, all right, go ahead.
So I, I guess my, my major question is about the contingency and peelback opportunities. If we find a particular, I mean, the university is, is one thing. Another, a local landlord is another where I'm sure there's lots of interfacing. But this, this other national company, this Laz Parking, what is the contingency and peelback if they don't tend, if they don't turn out to be the kind of owners that we want them to be?
Well, I don't think there is. We're selling the garage to them. And there is no contingency saying the sale is not valid if you don't live up to certain standards. We have ways to put pressure on entities to live up to standards. And I will tell you, we did significant background checks and reference checks for Laz's is the name of the company. And they are actually the second largest manage, parking management company in the country. And they have 15,000 employees, 3,500 locations and 30 some odd states. So we did, we did some extensive background checks. And so as with the other owners, they own it. Uh, obviously with, with regards to the prices they charge, we put some restrictions in up until June of 2025. And then they've given us indications of how they would do any type of increases thereafter. So we're, we, I think we did enough due diligence that we're comfortable that these will be good operators of the garage.
I mean, I'll, I'll be frank, I, when I saw it, I, I did just a little bit of Googling and there's, they definitely have been in some markets where they've, they've not been, people are not huge fans of them. I, I think that's more an exception to the rule. I'm not saying they're bad characters because something happened in one city, one time. But I am curious, like, so when you got references, it says that they look, they operate garages in Syracuse and Binghamton? Did we talk to the municipalities there and they're very happy with them as operators there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, I'll come back for round two, Councilmember Patterson. I'll stop for now.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
I believe I don't have any. I'm actually, when there's on the page, let's see, on your document that you have here, page four, at the bottom here, it says, right at the top of page five, intended use of net sales proceeds. The city will retain the net sale proceeds and parking fund to support the future financial stability of parking garage operations. Can you kind of explain what that is, what you mean by that? Um, just so, you know, I can understand that I, you know, so I can get the context correctly.
Yes, and we have a parking fund. That parking fund is a fund that's used to do the maintenance. And there's significant maintenance as well as operating losses that we experience with the garages. So the intention is, we're keeping several of the garages and in particular, South Ave and Stone Street Garage is the highest maintenance garage that we have, I believe, because, you know, it needs constant maintenance. And one of the reasons we're not selling it or having put it up for sale is that we, we're not comfortable that any owner would be able to upkeep it the way we want it to be kept up because of the convention center and other, other uses around that vicinity. So this will be the proceeds and this, you know, it, it, the net proceeds are substantial. We're, we're pleased with that. Will be used for future maintenance and operating loss makeups for the other garages that we keep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for the, the South Edge Garage, why, does that one need more maintenance than the others?
Uh, I can't answer that specifically. Amy, you want to give it a shot?
Uh, yes, well, there are two, two challenges. It is the largest. The combination of South Avenue and Stone Street together are the largest. So it does require more maintenance for that reason. And, um, you know, the other challenge is with garages, the maintenance is a combination of, you know, the ongoing wear and tear and salt that's brought in and, uh, salt eats through the concrete. And, um, as I'm sure many of you remember, we lost a portion of the garage several years ago when it collapsed, um, the helix. So it is a garage that has required more maintenance. Um, and we continue to have to do maintenance on it. But the size and the, the way it's constructed, all concrete with metal rebar tends to be very susceptible to salt damage, so we're constantly working on it.
But other than the, is it, is that constitution different than the other garages or is it just maintenance?
No, they're all, they're all very similar. It's just that this one is so much larger that it has a bigger impact.
Okay. Um, and, you know, being that they're a losing proposition and we know one way that, you know, the new owners will try to recoup that is to raise the prices, but also on maintenance and wages. And I guess my concern is, you know, if they aren't maintaining it well, that's a danger to our citizens. Um, you know, what are the mechanisms that we can utilize to make sure the garage is safe? And two, what happens to our employees that are currently working there?
Oh, did you want to address that? Did you want to address that or? Oh, okay. Okay, um, so on your, um, page five, under other, it mentions the impact on current city employees. Um, this is probably not exactly the answer that you were looking for, but, um, we do have two impacts on city employees. Library staff use the Court Street Garage. And so we do have a clause in the sale agreement to require that there are accommodations for those staff and also for library patrons that use that garage, which is directly adjacent to the Baushen Lam part of the library. So that is an impact there. But from an employment standpoint, we are not anticipating any jobs of current city employees to be impacted as a result of these sales.
And that holds true for next year's budget too?
Yes.
Okay. The only other question I have is, uh, two of the four garages did not list appraisal. Uh, I think it was Washington and East End. Can we get that?
All right, we will follow up on that and get that number to you. I'm not sure why. why it's not there. It should be.
Unless the document I'm looking at is, which is, our summary doesn't have it.
All right.
In the transmittal, on paragraph two, it has the appraised values.
For both of them.
For each of them.
Thank you.
For all four.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, thank you, Chair Patterson. I, I don't have too many questions, but I'm kind of going, going down the rabbit hole that Councilmember Gruber was alluding to, or what he led with. So in terms of accountability measures, could we just get a sense in writing what those are? Understanding that this is a sale to a private entity, and they're going to manage this garage, and we don't have clawbacks. I just want to understand how we're going to hold these folks accountable.
Okay.
And, and then the second thing, I do appreciate this summary. This is, this is excellent. This helps, and really accompanies the transmittal. But I do want to get a sense of, in terms of, sorry, I'm just getting myself organized here. So in terms of the other garages that are being proposed to be sold in the future, you know, obviously, those, those are going through, or have gone through an RFP process as well?
We, the, we have gone through the RFP processes for all four that we're looking for approval today. The final garage that we have slated to put out for RFP, which likely will be later this year, is the Crossroads Garage. And the reason we haven't done it sooner, because we're in the final stages of completing the Charles Cowell positive improvements. And we want that done first before we put it up.
Got it. So can we get the RFP summary sheets? Those weren't included in this package?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to make a comment here, and, you know, I got to tell you, I'm grateful to you, Councilmember Gruber, for asking the question that you asked. And I'm grateful for a very simple reason. Parking garages, though a losing proposition for us for quite a long time, are vitally important to downtown. And if memory serves me correctly, I know we had clawback provisions the last time that we offered these garages for sale. Because as a community, we understand that though these are some horrible structures, and we hated having to build them, they were needed, and we still need them. And there are standards of maintenance that have to be met. And one of the ways that we decided, if memory serves me correctly before, to hold whoever was going to buy these garages accountable, was to say that if you're not doing what we need you to do, we're going to take it back. And to hear that those provisions aren't anywhere in here is quite troubling for me. So I think myself and my, the rest of my colleagues need to do a little bit more research on all of this. We need to look at the history of what we've done before, and we no doubt need to have some more conversation about where we go forward, if we go forward with these items. So I'm going to be holding all of the parking garages in committee. We've got some time to talk. We don't need to vote on them today. But I, I find, though, the overall presentation is great, that one key point is extremely troubling for me. And, you know, since I, I can hold them, I'm going to hold them. So that's where we are with the parking garages.
Can I please make just a comment?
Sure.
Councilmember?
Sure.
Chairman, there are state and city codes that the operators and owners are required to live up to.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have the ability to have those codes enforced.
Okay.
And that is the primary mechanism that we will have to ensure that they're, that they're well kept.
Well, that, that's fine. And we, we got time to, to look at those, and, you know, we still have an opportunity to vote these out at the full council meeting, but in the meantime...
I just wanted to add that point.
Sure. But in the meantime, we can hold these now, and we can, you can provide us with that information and help us better understand how that structure works. And then, you know, hopefully, when we get to that Tuesday, we can vote them out of committee and move them forward then. But I don't think that would be the appropriate thing to do at this time. But...
Chair Patterson, I'm sorry, I just want to point a clarification.
Sure.
There are no RFPs, and correct me if I'm wrong, and for sale of property, is that correct? So there would not be RFP summaries for these items.
Okay. So what, so what would you like instead, Councilmember Gruber? You want to know?
I had just a couple other quick questions.
Well, I still got to finish, Council.
Yeah, call me when you're ready.
Councilmember Smith?
I just appreciate the hold, and I also worry about the impact on the residents and, yeah, and the ways in which they patron these establishments.
Okay. Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. And, Jose, and just to be clear, so there's no RFP summary, the, the garages went out to RFP. So wouldn't there be some type of summary of that, I'm not asking to see the RFPs by any stretch of the imagination, the submissions, but there ought to be some type of summary sheet that explains how, in particular, Laz Parking came out on top, right? Something?
They do go out for proposals, but once the people express interest, it's done as a confidential real estate negotiation, as it is with other real estate we buy and sell. And there is no RFP sheet, proposal sheet put together. All of that is kept completely confidential until the sale, for obvious reasons. You don't want to let the world know what numbers you're talking about. Obviously, the council knows what numbers we're talking about. But there is not the same kind of RFP documentation you would see when we put out for a proposal for an engineer or a proposal for some other type of professional service. Real estate in general is handled differently.
Okay. I just have a couple other quick, quick questions that Deputy Mayor, you and the team can just put together some answers for. And I, I do want to say, I, first of all, I don't want this to, I don't want to not mention that it's incredibly impressive that you all found buyers for all these garages after years and years of the city not being able to even find potential buyers. So I, I don't want to give it a doom and gloom message here. I just think we all have to do our due diligence with some important questions. One of them is about the Skyway. So it says very explicitly that the Skyway is not going to be maintained by whoever the purchaser is, or who is going to maintain the Skyways. That's one question. If you want to answer it now, that's fine. The second, to me, would be, just a, you, you mentioned in the transmittal, or, or this, this document, you mentioned the Sagamore as one building that there's some interesting byproducts of all of this because of the arrangement they have. There's also plenty of community-based organizations that have had agreements with some of these garages. So I wonder if we can just get a list of, of impacted community-based organizations and what kind of resolution there has been. I'm sure you've all reached out to all of them already, but would just be good to understand it. Yeah, I guess. And then the, the last thing would be, if there's any way to just share, if we can just get, I'd love to know what, what you all know, hearing from Syracuse and Binghamton about this group. I'm not saying we need to have a phone call or Zoom with them, but if there's like a, a letter from the mayor, the people in charge of parking that says they have been excellent, they've worked with us really well, I mean, I'd love to just be able to see a reference somehow.
Most of the references were phone calls. So we, maybe notes from phone calls might be...
Yeah, notes from phone calls, if someone wants to write a letter of recommendation, something like that. I, I'm not trying to make people jump through hoops and do extra work. I just think in particular with the place that we don't have a relationship with, it'd be good to understand why you all feel so good about it. Which is part of the goal of the RFP summary sheet. We just, we're, we're, we're blind up here. We don't know why Laz was chosen, except that they're big and, and you feel good about them. Help us feel good about them, too.
Councilmember Harris? Vice, no, you're good. Vice President? President? Councilmember Smith? All right, so we're holding all the parking garages. So anybody want to talk about URA 3? No? We're good? We're holding it? Okay. Introductory number 294, we're holding it. Introductory number 295, we're holding it. Introductory number 296, we're holding it. And now we get down to introductory, introductory number URA 4, Resoluting Authorizing the Donation of a Portion of 151 Mount Hope Avenue to the City of Rochester to Provide Access to the Erie Harbor Easement Phase 2 Improvements in the Genesee Gateway Park. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it. Second.
And now we vote. All in favor of URA 4, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. URA 4 passes. With there being no other work, oh, wait, introductory number 311, Authorizing the Acceptance of the Rochester Urban Renewal Agency's Donation of a Portion of 151 Mount Hope Avenue to Provide Access to the Erie Harbor Easement Phase 2 Improvement in the Genesee Gateway Park. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, motion and a second.
No, still left.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and then now we vote. All in favor of introductory number 311, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. With there being no other work stands before this committee, we stand adjourned.